Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order.
I'm so glad you're here, Tim.
I am, too.
As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. I will now call upon... Mr. Clark, please state your point of order. Excuse me? Well, when that item comes up, I will call upon you at that point. So at this point, your point of order is not well taken. At this time, I will call upon the students who participated in the American Legion Boys and Girls State Program this past summer to lead us in the pledge. So I ask that everyone please rise. Ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Erv Porter, who is co-chair of the committee that runs the Boys and Girls State Program.
Good evening. We're proud tonight to have 10 of the 15 members of the Greenwich Boys and Girls State delegation that represented their schools, the community, and themselves at Eastern Connecticut University earlier this year. And this is the largest group that we have ever sent. And I say that in the context that since 1979, American Legion and others have sponsored 408 Greenwich students who have just completed their junior year of high school. And those delegations represented not only Greenwich High, but Brunswick, from time to time, the Academy, Sacred Heart. This year, we also have a Greenwich resident who goes to Fairfield Prep. We got a call from the Guidance Counselor at Fairfield Prep and said, "I have this outstanding young man who would like to go to Boys State. We have no American Legion sponsoring organization in Fairfield. Can you help?" And we said, "Of course we can." For the first time in my involvement, which goes back to 1977, we sent everybody that was nominated by their Guidance Counselor or Headmaster. And the reason was very simple. We have a competitive process that we go through in terms of selection, but the bottom line out of all of it is that you couldn't distinguish one from another in terms of the qualities and the qualifications of this group. So we're especially proud not only to have 10 of those 15 people here, but we're proud of what their accomplishments were. And Libby will talk more about that in a minute. So in addition to that 408 people that go, that form their own government, along with other juniors in high school who will be seniors, I guess we now call those rising juniors. Is that correct? Is that what we call them? You guys are rising juniors, right? Oh, I'm sorry. I insulted you. You're rising seniors. Just checking you out.
I think they've risen.
They've risen. They've been risen. Out of that group, we have had a number of governors. And we eight boys and girls from Greenwich have been governors of Boys and Girls State, recognizing that there are many hundred that are there that form their own government during a period of a week. So immediately, it's a competitive process. And in addition, each state in the country chooses two representatives to go to Boys Nation and to Girls Nation. Those are the national sequels to Boys and Girls State. And among those names that are kind of household words that have been to Boys State as well as Boys Nation are President Clinton and our own Joe Lieberman. So if you're wondering whether or not you're going to get pushed, Mr. Tessie, Mr. Tonner, others, when it comes to the younger generation, if there's somebody following you that has an interest in giving back to the country, the short answer is that we're blessed to have them. And Libby, who has been a delightful co-chair for many years with me, and she will not admit what year she went to Girls State, I will admit what year I went to Boys State. I've been doing this for a long time. I went in 1952. Not 1852, 1952. Libby?
I always tell Erv that when I went, we met in a cave. Thank you so much, Erv.
By the way, this is Libby Florin, our state representative of the 149th district.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Since 1997, it has been my real honor and privilege to work with Erv Porter as co-chair of the Boys and Girls State Commission. Erv and I believe in this program, and we are totally committed to its continuing success as a learn-by-doing lesson in American democracy. We'd like to congratulate tonight some other civic-minded graduates of the program who are here. Would you please stand and be recognized? David Detchin is here. Greg Fruman. Dean Goss. Steve Meskers. And Doug Wells. As Erv told you, our 2015 delegation was the largest we have ever, ever sponsored. And it is truly an outstanding group of students from Greenwich High School, Brunswick, and Fairfield Prep. Now, would you just wave or step forward or whatever when I call your name? William Anderson. Elias Boyer. George Christ, Fairfield Prep. Alexander Dunn. Claire Eschright. Spencer Faragasso. James McFarland, Brunswick. Joseph Peters. Pietro Pico. James Pluniak. Matthew Rogers. Valerie Shaw. Victor Sumonte. Alexis Totor. And Nathaniel Ung. These are the best of the best, and you'll be seeing a lot more of them. Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. Congratulations on a wonderful job. All right. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our June 8 meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. Are there any suggested changes to those proposed minutes? Mr. Clark, please come forward.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, ladies and gentlemen. On page five of the minutes, item number 14, the second line should read, "The Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency." And a little further down, the second full paragraph, there's a superfluous period after the number 14. Thank you.
All right. Any objections to adding "and" in the resolution numbered 14 and removing the period after 14? Hearing none and absent objection, that motion to amend stands adopted upon unanimous consent. Any further corrections to our June 8 minutes? All right. Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. All right. Dean Gamanos and Teresa Hatton? All right. There we go. All right. Who's going to explain what that's all about? Dean Gamanos of District 7.
Thank you, Tom. I just want to also introduce Joseph Kantorski, who is the designer, who designed not only those beautiful posters that are outside, but our banner for the parade. And I'd like to thank Valerie Stauffer for jumping to the line here and suggesting that we have a banner, first for District 7, but then we thought maybe it would be better to have it for the whole RTM. So we went to Staples. They had a special deal in August, so we had two made. So we'll be marching in this glorious event on Sunday, which starts at 2:00. And Teresa Hatton from the Greenwich Port of Realtors is going to tell us some more of the details and where we're going to all meet.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me here this evening. I'm representing the Parade Committee of the 375th Anniversary Parade, and I'm excited for your participation in the parade. The parade will be on Sunday, September 27, and it will begin at Town Hall at 2:00 p.m. The parade will commence with an unfurling of a 50 by 100-foot American flag with all the ceremonies that go along with that on Haven Meyer Field. So the parade begins with an honor guard, colonial flags carried by our local Boy Scouts, descendants of the founders of Greenwich, the second company governor's foot guard, the second company governor's horse guard, our selectmen, Peter Tessie, Drew Marzillo, John Tonner, who also serves on our Parade Committee, our state-elected officials, and former selectmen and former state representatives, followed by the RTM and the BET. So we're excited for your participation. There are over a dozen floats representing various community groups, including Greenfingers, Rotary, and the Greenwich Historic Society, and the Greenwich Association of Realtors. Wells Fargo is providing their horse and carriage. And there are over 30 Greenwich civic organizations participating and marching. So we're very excited. The parade begins at Town Hall, proceeds down Indian Field Road, turns right onto the Post Road, and then right again down Greenwich Avenue. The walkers and marchers will proceed down Art Street, past where we have a showmobile. Tony Savino from WGCH will be the emcee for the ceremonies. Everybody who's marching will then turn and go down Bowler Place and then onto Haven Meyer Field. And the floats and vehicles will continue down Greenwich Avenue and commence in the Island Beach parking lot. Once everybody gets to the parade, the field at Haven Meyer Field, excuse me, each band will play a song while everybody's processing on. And then once the parade commences, the unfurling of the flag will begin. And to commemorate this beautiful, lovely, unbelievable image of our whole town gathered together, celebrating our history and our country, we have a beautiful, extraordinary, original photography that's coming in that's going to do a 360 gigapixel. So we'll have the entire image, and then it'll be on a website where you can zoom in and find yourself and share it on social media. So it's a wonderful commemorative piece of our history. So thank you very much for your opportunity to speak, and I look forward to seeing you this weekend on Sunday.
All right. So district chairs, please organize your, and beat the bushes to get our members out there, and let's have a good showing. I happen to remember 25 years ago, the 350th anniversary, where we had a flag down at Roger Sherman Baldwin. Ed Diddakis might not know this, but they did take a picture from on high of all of us holding that flag, and I was...
I have a poster of that.
I do, too. And I'm very close to you in that picture. Yes, I am. All right. So you don't want to miss out on being in that picture on Sunday, 2:00. It's essentially like the St. Patrick's Day Parade route. All right. Any questions? Just get in touch with your district chairs, and they can get in touch with me or Dean directly. Thank you very much for all the work you've done to organize this. Okay. At this point, I'll call on Dean Goss, Chair of District 1.
This past August, we lost Jane Pankowski. And she has been a very important part of our delegation. Joan was and is a very thorough Greenwich girl. She was born here. She was reared here. She graduated from high school here in 1956 and went on up to stores and graduated in 1960. And thereafter, she spent many years teaching elementary school. She loved the young. And she taught both in Wilton and later on here in St. Mary's, and finally was one of the founding teachers of the Mead School. Being one who did not like her idle hours, Joan also was a participant in almost anything that went on in town. As the senior center developed and its programs developed, she was a very active member of the user organization and presided over it for many, many years. We will miss her. In some way, we are all much better for having known her. She always met you as kind of a surprise. We are, as I say, all better for her having passed our way. She is gone, and we will miss her and wish her bon voyage. I don't know the words that customary, where we ask that this be embodied within the minutes and copies.
We will include your words. We'll include these in the minutes.
Yes.
And send a suitable copy to family. At this point, I ask that the members please rise and join me in a moment of silence in memory of Joan Pankowski. Thank you. Bob May, Chair of District 12.
Mr. Moderator, town officials, members and guests. During the RTM summer break on the 2nd of July, the members of District 12 were deeply saddened to learn of the sudden and untimely passing of our fellow member and friend Bernard Schneider. Bernard was born in Brooklyn, New York. He studied economics at Brooklyn College and earned a master's degree from Princeton University. During his life, Bernard pursued three different career paths. As an economist-statistician, he taught at Princeton and later worked for the Federal Reserve Bank of New York. In 1997, he earned a law degree from New York University and began a career as a corporate attorney. He worked at Linden &amp; Deutsch and was a partner at Levy, Rosenzweig &amp; Hyman, and later at Robinson &amp; Brog. He represented a wide variety of clients, including such Broadway shows as Phantom and Les Mis. In 2005, Bernard began his third career by earning a master's degree in education. He taught mathematics at Briggs High School in Norwalk and worked as a substitute and permanent substitute teacher in Greenwich and Stanford. Bernard also had a lengthy commitment to service to his community. While living in Dobbs Ferry, New York, he was a member of and served as chairman of the Board of Education. During his tenure, the district engaged in two major school construction projects where he negotiated the architects' and general contractors' agreements. After moving to Greenwich, Bernard continued to be active in many community organizations. A highly respected member of the Retired Men's Association, he served as publicity chair. There, he was responsible for obtaining weekly guest speakers and advertising their appearance. He was also tasked with publicizing the many volunteer accomplishments of the RMA throughout the community. Bernard joined the Democratic Town Committee, where he served on the executive board and was chair of the DTC District 12 delegation. He became a member of RTM District 12 in 2010 and served as alternate on the land use committee. When Bernard spoke before this body, he would always preface his comments with, "I know I'm the new kid on the block," but his statements were always carefully thought out and well articulated. He also served as a member of the Institutional Review Board at Greenwich Hospital, as an ESL tutor for Literacy Volunteers of America in Stanford, and most recently as vice president of the Board of Trustees for the Academic Leadership Charter School in the Bronx, New York. Bernard was an avid bridge player. It was said that he was a great chess player in college, but found that few women played the game and switched to bridge. He was a member of the Board of Directors of the Connecticut Unit of the American Contract Bridge League and delegate from Connecticut to the New England Bridge Conference. He also wrote a quarterly column for two contract bridge publications. I think that retired men's associate member, Mr. Horst Tebby, expressed it best in an email to the Greenwich Times. I quote, "He was a true modern Renaissance man. From Thalmudic studies to the law, to literature, to art, to math, to computer technology, he was not only aware, but could and did contribute." End quote. His friendship and wise counsel will be missed. District 12 asks that the members of this body join with him in recognizing his service to the town and the many other contributions made by Bernard Schneider for the betterment of the Greenwich community. In his honor, we ask that these comments be included in the minutes of the meeting. Thank you.
Will the members please rise for a moment of silence in memory of Bernard Schneider? Thank you. That now brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. I informed our district and committee chairs that based upon the reports received, I would recommend the following organization of our call. I will place item number one on the consent calendar. That will be the only item to go on the consent calendar. I will recommend that we combine items 3, 5, 9, and 10 for voting purposes, and that we then take up separately items 2, 4, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 12. All right. At this point, I will designate item number one for the consent calendar, and if it remains there, we will hear no committee reports and no discussion on this item. Item one is a resolution to appoint Patricia Rand Burns to be a regular member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring March 31, 2018. All right. Is there any objection to item one being placed on our consent calendar? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar item number one, and proceed to poll your delegation? All right. It was the consensus of the reporting districts that we combine items 3, 5, 9, and 10 for voting purposes. In order to do that, we must suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine items 3, 5, 9, and 10? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items 3, 5, 9, and 10 for voting purposes. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of combining items 3, 5, 9, and 10 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion has carried. Mr. Von Keiseling, for what purpose do you rise?
For the point of extradition, the consent item, since there's nobody hearing no objection, will it just be adopted by consent?
No, we're going to have a record vote on that, and it won't take up any time, since we are continuing with the business of the meeting. All right. So we have now suspended the rules and combined those four items for voting purposes. We will take them up in numerical order and then proceed with the remaining separate items. So item number three now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? John Tonner, our selectman.
Item number three, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectment be appointed a regular member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring 3/31/16, Carol A. Byrne.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item three has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee?
Good evening. The Health and Human Services Committee met with Ms. Burns on Tuesday night to review her nomination to the Commission on Aging. Ms. Burns has a long and deep professional career serving the aged population in Greenwich. This past June, she retired from the River House Adult Daycare Center after working there for almost 28 years and serving as the executive director for 26 years. In addition to her work at River House, she's an active member of numerous local and national aging organizations, such as the American Society on Aging, the National Association of Adult Day Services. She's also the past president of the Connecticut Association of Adult Day Services, a member of the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders Advisory Committee, and a board member of the Connecticut Geriatric Society. Some of the issues that Ms. Burns would like to focus on as a Commission on Aging board member are: working with seniors to explain how they can afford and access the services listed in the directory that the Commission on Aging publishes each year. That directory contains all of the various programs that seniors can take advantage of in the community. And while seniors may be aware of the program, they may not be aware of how to access them or how to pay for those services. Ms. Burns would also like to ensure that seniors have adequate transportation to get to their various appointments, and that they have access to a variety of transportation options, such as Share the Fair, Greenwich Taxi, TAG. And for example, if a senior needs transportation to an appointment past 5:00 p.m. or on Sunday, she wants to ensure that the Commission on Aging has a relationship with multiple service providers that can adequately cover those client needs. Given Ms. Burns' expertise in the area of elder care and her vast professional involvement in the field of aging, our committee was delighted to recommend her to the Commission on Aging. Our vote was 10-0-0 with Districts 2 and 8 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace Garthwaite with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Good evening. Carol Burns met with the Appointments Committee on July 23. The vote was 10-0-0. Districts 2 and 3 were absent, and essentially you heard about what a fine nominee she is for the Commission on Aging. She has a very deep and broad experience, particularly in Greenwich, so definitely an excellent candidate for this particular role. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item three. Item five now comes before us. John Tonner with that resolution.
Item number five, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectment be appointed a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board of Directors for a term expiring 3/31/18, Francis A. Ennis Jr.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. Once again, Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Our committee met with Dr. Ennis last Tuesday. Dr. Ennis is a prominent local orthopedic surgeon who's affiliated with ONS in Greenwich. Dr. Ennis currently refers many of his patients to Witherell's short-term rehab facility for treatment post-surgery. As you know, the short-term rehab facility at Witherell has been more successful than anyone could have imagined. They currently turn away approximately 264 clients per year because they don't have the capacity to accept them. Given the overwhelming success of the rehabilitation unit at Witherell, it made sense to bring in a medical expert on the board that specializes in orthopedic surgery. Dr. Ennis is familiar with best practices for managing orthopedic care post-surgery, and he's also familiar with the different rehabilitation facilities in the community. Dr. Ennis stated that because his practice draws from a large geographic area, that he typically recommends one of three facilities to his patients based on where they and their families live: Waverney, Osborne, and Witherell, and that ultimately, decision on where to receive treatment is based in large part by how accessible it is to the family. And that should help dispel any notions of conflict of interest as the patient ultimately selects the rehabilitation location. selects the rehabilitation location. Two of Dr. Ennis' goals as a member of the Board is to reduce, are to reduce the length of stay the patient stays in the rehab facility, as well as promote the market, promote and market Witherall to a younger patient population seeking rehabilitation. Our vote was 12-0-0 to recommend Dr. Ennis to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Dr. Ennis met with the Appointments Committee on September 1. The vote was 11-0-0. District 11 was absent. As you have heard, Dr. Ennis has the experience with rehabilitation. He is aware of the various facilities. He said that how Nathaniel Witherall is perceived after the renovation has been phenomenal and that it really does rank very high with the patients that he sees. His expertise is valuable because clearly there's always work to be done, and he looks forward to advising the Board on areas where there can be improvement.
Thank you. Discussion on item five. Item nine now comes before us. Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Item nine.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed ex officio member of the Harbor Management Commission for the term expiring 12/31/15, Horst Tebby.
Thank you. That item being offered by one of our committees does not require a second and is now before us. May we have the report on item nine?
Horst Tebby met with the Appointments Committee on July 23. The vote was 10-0-0. Dist. 2 and 3 were absent. Mr. Tebby is serving his first term on the RTM in District 6. He is a former member of the Old Greenwich Yacht Club and a current member of the Riverside Yacht Club, where he is a former Board Member and Race Committee Chair. Over the years, he's been active in organizing and running local yacht racing activities, including Long Island Championship Regatta for the Yacht Racing Association of Long Island Sound. He has also participated in or ran the Race Committee of many other local regattas. He considers himself very familiar with the local coastline and feels he can be a valuable liaison for the RTM. Again, the vote was 10-0-0.
Thank you. Karen Sodakon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and members. Last Tuesday, our committee interviewed Mr. Tebby. He brings much relevant experience with him for this position. As Candace has told you, he's been a resident of Greenwich for 40 years and joined District 6 RTM last March to fill a vacancy. He has spent most of his life on the waterfront, born in Hamburg and grew up on the Jersey Shore. He came to Greenwich, came to the U.S. at the age of 11. He is, she noted, belonged to Old Greenwich Yacht Club and now is very active at Riverside Yacht Club, where he serves on the Race Committee and is involved in running major regattas. Professionally, he calls himself a tech person. He retired in 2002 after serving as a Business Development Officer for several major corporations such as Bell Labs, Kraft, PepsiCo, et cetera. His other volunteer work includes the Retired Men's Association, the town cable television channel GCTH, and he's the former President of the Lucas Point Association. As a part of his role in the Harbor Management Commission, he's interested in seeing the work of the Harbor Master with the town so that important and necessary projects such as dredging can be accomplished effectively. Our vote was 8-0-0. Dist. 5, 9, 11, and 12 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item nine. Item 10 now comes before us. John Tonner once again.
Resolve that the historic District Commission be named the official study committee to perform an investigation regarding 117 Dingle Town Road to determine its appropriateness for designation as a local historic property.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 10 has been moved and seconded. Peter Berg with the report of the Land Use Committee. Item 10.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Committee took up item 10 last Monday night. We had Ann Young from the Historic District Commission to answer questions regarding this designation process. She emphasized that the desire of the Historic District Commission to preserve as much of the town's 18th century structures as possible. In addition, the current owner is strongly in support of this designation. Ms. Young explained that creating this committee is a first step in a process and that this matter will come back to the RTM for final approval of any designation. So this is a, this is a process that's laid out in state law, and this is just the first step, which is to form a committee to study the property. The property will remain owned by the current owner, can be sold, but it will, but the, but if it is designated, the, the structure cannot be altered without the approval of the Historic District Commission. Has no other particular impact on property taxes or, or other matters.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. And since, well, let me just ask, will a member please move the adoption of item 10? Item 10 has been moved and seconded, and is that your entire report?
That's the report.
Terrific. Thank you. Discussion on item 10. Will the District Chairs please mark your voting cards, combine calendar items three, five, nine, and 10, and proceed to poll your delegation? I do have the result of the vote on item one, which was the only consent calendar item. That was the appointment of Patricia Burns to the Commission on Aging. Those in favor, 157. Opposed, zero. Abstaining, zero. Item one has carried. Peter Tessie, our selectman, with item two, the first of our separate items.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Inland Wetlands Water Courses Agency for a term expiring 3/31/16. Stephen-
All right, and that was inland wetlands and water courses, one word, right?
Yes.
All right. So you are, although we did postpone this item, I had asked Mr. Tessie if he would present this essentially as a substitute resolution, first of all, to include the full, complete name of the agency, and to make it clear, the date in June was different, and it has been corrected.
That is correct. It is 3/31/16.
Thank you. All right. Will a member please move the adoption, excuse me?
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
And, inland wetlands and water courses.
That's what he said.
What he said is now what you're calling.
Mr. Clark, we just made clear he is not presenting what's on the call, he's presenting a substitute. All right. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution on item two? Substitute resolution on item two has been moved and seconded. Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
The Appointments Committee was unable to meet Mr. Fong, so I moved to postpone item number two to the October RTM meeting.
All right. And I take it land use has no objection? Mr. Berg?
No objection.
All right. So the motion to postpone item two, having been offered on behalf of one of our committees, does not require a second and is now currently before us. Discussion on the motion to postpone item two to the October meeting.
Question.
All right, we can adopt that upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to postponing item two to the October meeting? Hearing none, absent objection. The motion to postpone is adopted upon unanimous consent. All right. Item four is the next separate item to come before us. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed as a regular member of the New Lebanon Elementary School Building Committee, Jake Allen.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item four has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Candace Garthwaite with the Appointments Committee report.
Jake Allen met with the Appointments Committee on July 23. The vote was 10-0-0. Dist. 2 and 3 were absent. Mr. Allen grew up in Greenwich and owns Allen Construction and Consulting, a commercial construction company based in Greenwich. His firm did the physical construction on Greenwich Adult Daycare in Kos Cob. Mr. Allen has three children who attend the North Myena School. He is grateful to the community of Greenwich and wants to give back in a meaningful way. He does not see any conflict of interest in this appointment. Again, the vote was 10-0-0.
Thank you. Arlene Lamazo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members. The Public Works Committee had only two items referred to it. One was this item four. Jake Allen is being nominated as a regular member to the New Lebanon Building Committee. He was interviewed this evening by a joint committee with the Education. Mr. Allen has an extensive history in the construction business, especially locally, where his firm, Allen Construction and Consulting, did the physical construction of the Greenwich Adult Daycare Center, which was a formidable project requiring the complete restoration and rebuilding of the town's pump station adjacent to the Myena's River. The result was a building of remarkable aesthetic and functional use, serving residents of our entire town. In addition, his firm served as construction managers for the new additions to the Greenwich Country Day School. We felt that his experience warranted our support of this nomination, and we voted 10-0-0 with Dist. 1, 4, and 11 absent. Thank you.
Josh Brown, Chair of our Education Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, we took this item number four up last Monday at our Education Committee meeting. Unfortunately, we did not have the pleasure of Mr. Allen's participation. At that time, we did take a vote. It was nine in favor, none opposed, with two abstaining. We, as a group, decided that it would be in our best interest to meet with Mr. Allen, so adjourned the meeting to reconvene this evening, the idea to have a special meeting with Public Works, which was successful this evening. We interviewed. I have little to add to what was already shared, except that he's going to, appears to bring very good, solid construction experience to the, to the committee, which has got a couple of lawyers, a couple of architects, you know, some engineers, and felt that construction experience would be well-called for. So our vote tonight was 9-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item four. Will the District Chairs please mark your voting cards, item number four, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item six is the next item to come before us. Our first selectman, Peter Tessie.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring 3/31/17.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item six has been moved and seconded.
I didn't say his name. H. Andrew Fox.
All right. Sorry. Thank you. Item six is now before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Who's going to go first? Candace Garthwaite with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Don't touch the microphone. It's always my first instinct. Mr. Fox met with the Appointments Committee on August 18. All districts were represented. The vote was 12-0-0. Mr. Fox is currently an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and he, if appointed, would be replacing Frederick Brooks. Mr. Fox is a civil engineer and a partner in a local real estate development and construction management firm. His firm builds high-end residential properties, and he does not feel there is a conflict of interest. Certainly, if there is a conflict, then he does recuse himself. Mr. Fox supports the plan of conservation and development and supports the neighborhood plans, as have been set up by the plan of conservation and development. He also knows that there are challenges to be addressed in preserving the character of the neighborhoods in Greenwich. Mr. Fox was a member of the Nathaniel Witherall Board and chaired the Project Renew Building Committee. He also chaired the Greenwich Adult Daycare Building Committee. Again, the vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening again. Mr. Fox was interviewed by the Land Use Committee last Monday evening. Considerable discussion revolved around the candidate's potential for conflict of interest, given his business in residential development and construction and private consulting on planning and zoning issues. Mr. Fox responded that, given his construction business involved only as-of-right lot subdivision cases, and he never represents third parties before the Planning and Zoning Commission in his consulting business, very few submissions had required him to recuse himself, estimating three cases over the past year. Questions arose about time commitment as a regular member as opposed to an alternate. Mr. Fox said that his business is in town and makes it convenient for him to attend meetings, and that he had made an effort to attend the briefing meetings and the regular meetings, having missed only three Monday briefing meetings and one regular meeting since being appointed as an alternate 18 months ago. He also mentioned that now that the Nathaniel Witherall project is done, he will have more time available for, for community service. The committee then asked Mr. Fox about development in our downtown neighborhood. He was asked about the appropriateness of a multifamily project currently under construction on Millbank Avenue. Mr. Fox said he was not on the commission when that project was approved and said he was not familiar with it. He was asked his opinion regarding additional residential and parking in the downtown area. Mr. Fox expressed support for more upper-floor residential along Greenwich Avenue rather than offices, and said that while he would not support above-ground, multi-level garage structures downtown, he could imagine that a multi-level garage structure that was partially underground under certain circumstances, depending on details. Mr. Fox was asked his opinion regarding the FAR regimen for limiting house size, as well as the use of fill in wedding cake house designs. He felt that the FAR concept should be replaced by a lot coverage setback and height restriction concept, and that wedding cake fill to hide basement FAR was not appropriate. Finally, there was concern expressed regarding Mr. Fox's tenure as an alternate on the commission compared to some other alternates, particularly given his potential selection as Commission Chairman at some time in the near future. First Selectman Peter Tessie addressed the committee and that concern by saying that, while it may, may not be common for alternates to be advanced based on tenure, it may not, that is, it may, it may not be common for alternates to be advanced without senior tenure. It was not a requirement, and it is up to the judgment of the selectman as to what skills and experience would best be served at any given time when there is an opening on the commission. Mr. Tessie also asked delegates to recommend potential candidates to come forward, as there is likely to be a need for two additional alternate members within the next few months. Our vote on this, on Mr. Fox was 8-2-0. Dist. 3 and 7 absent. The no votes came from District 10 and 11. In the case of District 10, it was the candidate's considerably shorter tenure on the commission compared to another alternate, and District 11's no vote was based on the candidate's desire to replace the FAR building limitation with a different concept.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Discussion on item six. Harry Levine, District 11.
Mr. Moderator, and members of the RTM. I oppose the nomination to appoint Mr. Fox as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. At the meeting of the Land Use Committee last Monday, Mr. Fox stated that he would support the elimination of the FAR and would substitute a limitation- support the elimination of the FAR and would substitute a limitation consisting of a percentage of lot size. Thus, if a building's footprint is within the allowed percentage, you can build what you wish. The FAR was adopted in Greenwich in nineteen sixty-nine. It's been part of the Building Zone Regulations for forty-five years. It limits the aggregate bulk of all buildings on a lot. It helps achieve basic objectives of the Building Zone Regulations, including preventing the overcrowding of land, avoiding undue concentration of population, and limiting the heightened bulk of buildings. Prior to the adoption of the FAR, the Building Zone Regulations had a limit on constructions. It was a percentage of the lot's size. This allowed disproportionately large buildings to be built. This is exactly what Mr. Fox would have us return to. In June nineteen ninety-eight, a sense of the meeting resolution was adopted by the RTM, expressing concern about the construction of oversized houses. The vote was one seventy-four in favor and fifteen opposed. As a result, P&amp;Z reduced the FAR in smaller zones and imposed, for the first time, the FAR in Zones two and four acre. Notwithstanding the dire predictions of the adverse effects such changes would have on property values, in fact, they went up. I know of nothing that indicates the RTM now favors changing regulations to allow larger houses to be built. If anyone doubts this, it's a very simple solution. Discover the truth. Bring a sense of meaning resolution to before this body. Urge the P&amp;Z to change regulations to allow larger houses. Of course, this is very unlikely to happen, for the simple reason it will certainly be overwhelmingly rejected. In this town of many talents, there has to be qualified candidates to be regular members of the Planning and Zoning Commission that are not financially involved in the very industry the P&amp;Z is assigned to control. I urge the Board of Selectmen to find such candidates and nominate them for appointment by the RTM. For foregoing reasons, I oppose the nomination of Mr. Fox to be a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Further discussion on item six. Mark Pruner, District ten.
The way the FAR has evolved in this town, for me as a practicing real estate agent, is a nightmare. We do silly things like, if a house is close to its FAR, we put braces in the attic so that there's a lattice of X two-by-fours that you have to crawl over. The wedding caking phenomenon. There has been layer after layer of regulations that have tried to put a Band-Aid on what has become an overly complicated idea. I don't know if it should be replaced in its entirety. The majority of towns, my understanding is in Fairfield, don't use it and do use what this candidate has proposed. I think it's something that we should not reject a candidate out of hand, simply because he asked to examine a system that works very poorly. Thank you.
Don Conway, District two.
Good evening. I rise to ask the body if they might consider tabling Mr. Fox for the time being. I ask this for a reason that was given, one of the reasons that was given for his nomination was that he is more qualified than some of the other people that are alternates. I happen to know one of the other alternates that is a senior member to Mr. Fox. That's Nancy Raymer. She's a lawyer. She's a very good lawyer, and she knows the tax and the real estate law in this town. She has, on many occasions, asked the questions and received the answers to a lot of different projects that could have gone through or might have cost this town a lot of money, possible lawsuits down the line. I think going past her, and especially since she has been such a dedicated person, I think is a mistake. There is time for Mr. Fox in the future, because there are other people that are considering not running. But at this time, I believe Ms. Raymer should be the one in line for this. Thank you.
Mr. Von Keiseling, District eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. As you know, I spend long years in appointments. The purpose of the RTM is to build sound, solid, functioning boards and agencies in our town. When we pick people for these boards, it's not that we're picking that person and that person alone. We're picking a person who fits in to create a healthy, functioning board the best we can. Remember, it is the prerogative of the Board of Selectmen to form who they think would be the best person, not out of all the choices, but the best person who fits and suits the needs of the Board at that time. That's at their total discretion. They propose, we dispose. As Appointments Committee, we have often in the past, I'm no longer an alumni, but I'm proud to have served on it, try to create these boards, in a sense. I have known, in this case, Mr. Fox, I concur with the selectmen. I've known Mr. Fox for many years in his efforts on Nathaniel Withersall and many other good works, hard work for the town, and he has been exemplary, not only in his knowledge and his skills and ability to bring people together and get things done, as he did with Nathaniel Withersall, but also in his extremely deep and wide knowledge of the zoning issues that involve. It's important to know, when you write a code, as Mr. Pruner was saying, how it hits the ground, how it actually turns out. We did half a job with FAR. We got to FAR, says, boy, we had such a fight over FAR, that's going to save the McMansion thing, stop it dead, and we went home. And we've had many people on the Planning and Zoning and others who've said subsequent to that, that FAR is only one factor of controlling the McMansions that the RTM was concerned about at that time. There are several other constraints that have to be broadening. Otherwise, we get like squeezing the balloon. We squeeze it here with the FAR and it pops out here, as Mr. Pruner was saying about attics with a lot of trusses in it. It didn't stop the mass of the building that people are objecting to. They're not objecting to how much is in the house, they're objecting to how much they see from the road or outside. So, the house is just as big a volume as it is, whether the FAR is this size or that size, so it didn't solve our problem. We have a gentleman here who knows exactly how it works if you want to catch, you know, catch the rabbit. And if you want to catch the rabbit, get a hunter. We have an experienced hunter here. He knows what he's doing. He's hitting the ground running. He's served as an alternate, which we like to have somebody serve, so they get up to speed and know not only the ground, as he does, but how that particular board works and works among each other. I cannot more strongly recommend Mr. Fox's appointment than this. Thank you.
I'd rather you leave my rabbits alone and catch my chipmunks. All right. Further discussion on item six. Mr. Brogan? No, there is not. Further discussion on item six. Don Heller, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. In the original, well, almost seven years ago now, Plan of Conservation and Development, there was a small section on Nathaniel Withersall. And it ends up by saying, "An approved long-term renovation and modernization project is moving The entire project went forward without many of the major problems we've had on institutions in this town. And I don't have to cite any in particular, but this is a project under Mr. Fox's direction that knew no major problem. And the committee all worked together, and he showed just tremendous leadership. That was the major reason, I think, that the selectmen chose, and I supported their choosing of Mr. Fox to be the next commissioner. One comment on FAR. FAR has always been a controversial item. And there have been commissioners in the past who wanted to do away with it completely. It is a subject still for review. I admired Mr. Fox in answering a question from Mr. Labine very directly, when he could have said, "I'm investigating it." He has an opinion. It's not necessarily the view of the entire commission, but we're working on it. So, I come before you in support of his nomination, and thank you.
Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Greenwich is known for an abundance of riches, and in this case, the Board of Selectmen had that abundance in looking at the candidates that were before us for consideration to be elevated to a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Both Mr. Marzullo and Mr. Toner and I met with each of the three alternates to assess not only their individual backgrounds and skills, of which we were familiar, having them come before us as alternates, but also to assess what they learned during the period of time in which they served on the commission. In my judgment, Andy Fox made the most sense to move forward at this time, given his practical and professional experience working in the subject matter. We are fortunate that we have just had the appointment of a new town planner with tremendous experience, energy, and willingness to advance resolution to many issues that have sort of been lingering out there, and she's put her heart and soul into this endeavor. And I've worked closely with her as groups come into my office on various elements. And the one thing is that there's been a responsiveness, and I believe Andy's expertise working with our new town planner will lend itself to helping come to some resolutions to these issues. And that is one of the primary reasons why he had moved forward at this time. I think it's also important to know, in looking at the facts, that you have an appointment before you that is essentially for a little over a year and a half. So, if he is appointed, he has a year and a half to serve. He will be back before you again for reconsideration. The seat that is currently occupied by Mr. Heller, if he chooses not to continue for reappointment in March of sixteen, will then likely go to Ms. Raymer, and she would be before you for a three-year term. So, I think we're very much caught up, perhaps, in the personalities, in the timing, in not looking long-term, that we have three excellent candidates in our alternates, and we're going to have potentially another opening within a very short period of time. So, I would encourage you to support Andy moving forward and know full well that you have Ms. Raymer and Mr. McCray as future candidates in the very near term. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number six, and proceed to poll your delegation. I do have the result of the vote. I don't think I announced the combined calendar items. Those were items three, five, nine, and ten. Those in favor, one fifty-eight. Opposed, zero. Abstaining, zero. The combined items have carried. And I have the result of the vote on item four, which is the appointment of Jake Allen to be a member of the New Lebanon Building Committee. Those in favor, one fifty-three. Opposed, two. Abstaining, zero. That item has carried. That brings us to item number seven. May we have the resolution on that? Al Kaba, Director of Labor Relations.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. Item number seven, it is as it appears on the call. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the United Public Service Employees Union. Those would be the town public nurses. Is that correct, Mr. Kaba? Thank you. All right. Will a member please move the adoption of that resolution? The resolution on item seven has been moved and seconded. David Detchin, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Your RTM Labor Contracts Committee met on two September to review the recently negotiated collective bargaining agreement between the town and the new union representing the town's twenty-one nurses, the United Public Service Employees Union, or UPSU. Of the twenty-one nurses, eighteen are within the school system, and three are in the Department of Health. This is our smallest collective bargaining unit in the town, with twenty-one members. Please note that your Labor Contracts Committee currently has only four full members, rather than five, the customary five, since one full member left the committee this summer, when he moved out of Greenwich. Nevertheless, at our meeting on two September, we had not only the remaining four full members, but also both of our alternate members, so we had a quorum. After its review and an extended discussion with Al Kaba, the town's labor contract negotiator, the committee voted five, zero, to recommend that the RTM approve this new contract. The remaining alternate member noted that if her vote had been required, she also would have voted to recommend approval of the contract. Mr. Kaba noted that, to the Labor Contracts Committee, that the town achieved all of its primary negotiating objectives in the course of these labor negotiations. Those five primary objectives are set out in the Explanos for this meeting, and you can see them there. As a result of the elimination of the POS medical plan, with all members of the collective bargaining unit moving to the high deductible plan, there will be a meaningful savings for the town in healthcare costs, since about half the nurses in this collective bargaining unit are currently in the POS plan. These actual and projected healthcare costs over the two-year period of this contract will ameliorate the increase in total contract costs arising from the GWI, the gross wage increase that was agreed upon. Thus, despite the GWI of two-point-six percent in each of the two years, the total increase in contract costs for two thousand fifteen, sixteen will be one-point-three-zero percent, and in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, it will likely be zero-point-seven-nine percent, under one percent, as set out in the Explanos. I should also mention that the UPSU agreed to allow the town to implement a medical management care network for the treatment of workers' compensation injuries. Although this plan won't be implemented until all collective bargaining units in the town have agreed to it, it is expected that the program can save the town up to seven percent of such costs. As I mentioned, this is a two-year contract for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, and for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. The GWI for each year is to be two-point-six percent. The GWI settlement for nurses in Connecticut for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen have ranged from one-point-seven-five percent to three-point-two-two percent, with the average being about two-point-two-two percent. And for two thousand sixteen, seventeen, between one-point-seven-five percent and three percent, with the average being two-point-three-four percent. Thus, the GWIs, as agreed to, are somewhere between three-point-seven-eight percent and zero-point-two-six percent above the average. There are no incremental costs with this collective bargaining unit, since all nurses are at the top step. Although the agreed GWI is slightly above the averages for the two years noted, the Labor Contracts Committee thought that the GWI was reasonable, given the difficulty of obtaining and retaining nurses. As it is, the town's contractually-agreed maximum rate for nurses under this contract is not the highest in Fairfield County. In fact, Greenwich is likely to end up as seventh or eighth out of nineteen communities with labor contracts for nurses. In other words, in the second quartile, with towns such as Norwalk, Westport, Darien, and Danbury having nurses at maximum rates higher than those we have negotiated in this particular contract. particular contract. Those of us on the committee are aware that there are members of the RTM who are frustrated about the fact that we can't go in and achieve a GWI that is roughly around the inflation rate. Unfortunately, this is a particular situation where the state's mandatory arbitration procedure is not our friend. The principal problem is that the arbitration procedure is a baseball sort of arbitration, which means that the arbitrators cannot average out the position of the town and the union, but rather have to pick one or the other. To give you an example of what can happen, if the town were to go in and ask for a GWI of 1%, for example, somewhere around inflation, but the average that was being achieved in settlements in other towns in Connecticut was somewhere around 2.5%, then the union could come in and make a proposal of 3%, and the town would want a significant risk that, in fact, the 3% would be accepted by the arbitrators, because frankly, it's closer to the average. Thus, we would not get our 1%, and we would end up with a 3% that would be even higher than what we could have achieved if we had, in fact, negotiated the GWI. This is a frustrating situation. It frustrates all of us, but I have to say that I think the complaint box is not so much in Greenwich, but rather in Hartford, if you don't like it. Nevertheless, I want to emphasize that the town is not reluctant to arbitrate. By my reckoning, the town, in fact, decides to go to mediation and arbitration around two times during each two-year legislative term of this RTM. Sometimes we have to go all the way to arbitration. Sometimes a settlement is achieved in the course of mediation. The fact is, the town right now is in arbitration on one particular, or a couple of particular issues, actually, with another collective bargaining unit in the town. In any event, as noted, your Labor Contracts Committee voted 5-0 to recommend approval of this contract by the RTM.
Michael Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests. We met and addressed this item last Monday at 7:30. We had 11 delegates present and two alternates, with all 12 districts represented. We voted for this item 12-0-0. I'm assuming you do not want to hear again what you just heard. I would make the comment that in addressing this item, we put some emphasis on the fact that when we look at a bargaining unit, you have to look at what does it take to recruit and retain qualified people? This is often not an issue with many of our bargaining units. We can get all the people we want, but not so for nurses and public health nurses. In discussing this with Mr. Kaba and Mike Mason, who he had with us to help us understand this, it's important to recognize that this is a supply-and-demand issue, and it somewhat colored our thinking of the whole thing. Normally, I think your Finance Committee would be looking at what we gave in increases over and above inflation versus what we got in return. In this case, being a supply-and-demand matter, we somewhat, we saw the need to keep our rates competitive, and so we approved this overwhelmingly. I would also say that the Finance Committee has taken the issue of labor relations as one of the items we will be addressing independently in the coming year, and we will come back at you with recommendations as to what we might do outside of going through arbitration. There may be strategies we can take, and at some later time, we'll address those. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Harkins, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Your Town Services Committee met last Tuesday to take up item seven. You have heard, well, a good explanation from Mr. Detchin and Mr. Warner. We had a few things that we might add. We covered the same issues of changes to the health care plan, changes to the workers' compensation, changes to payroll and paid holidays, which I don't think was brought up, but they're also moving the way that people are being paid, so that we will glean one week out of 52 for a one-year saving of 4%. And there are also changes to the holidays in the contract, because heretofore, the nurses were not on a school calendar, and they were paid overtime or paid additional compensation in order to work those days. So there was a change. Those things are all to the good. One of our members was concerned, and that was the reason for our vote of 9-0-1, was concerned about the 2.6 wage increase as being too high. We don't know what is that person or others would think is the right number, so it really was a difficult, it was a difficult part of the argument to understand. The issue of premium sharing, however, is an issue that I'm concerned with, and I spoke on it, regarding the fact that because premium sharing is the same premium whether you're paid well or you're paid less well, those who are less well-compensated, in effect, have to pay more on a percentage basis than those who are better compensated. And I think that's something we should consider. Mr. Kaba said there are programs that are available that allowed for tiered pricing by wages, and that would somewhat mitigate the problem of an unfair situation with those that are less well-compensated. Our vote was 9-0-1, as I said. We discussed a few things about strategies to handle this in the future, but there was no, nothing that really is worth talking about at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Discussion on item seven. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number seven, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item number eight now comes before us. Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed alternate member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board for the term expiring 3/31/19, Robert A. Sensi.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. May we have the reports of the committees, beginning with the Appointments Committee? Candace Garthwaite.
Robert Sensi, Bob Sensi, met with the Appointments Committee on August 18. All districts were represented. The vote was 12-0-0. As an alternate, if Mr. Sensi is appointed, he will be replacing Lyle Gibbons. Mr. Sensi specialized in municipal finance as an investment banker at Goldman Sachs, where his work focused on the financing of nonprofit universities and hospitals and project financing for state and local governments. He retired from Goldman as a general partner after 23 years. Mr. Sensi has been a resident of Greenwich since 1989 and is serving his first term on the RTM in District 6. Initially, he was a delegate to the Budget Overview Committee and now serves as an alternate on the Finance Committee. Again, our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening again. So Mr. Sensi came to the Land Use Committee last Monday night. As Ms. Garthwaite explained, his career was in municipal finance. I don't believe we've had a municipal finance expert before on the Flood and Erosion Control Board, so we discussed what his role might be on that board. As you may know, the Flood and Erosion Control Board has identified a number of flood and erosion control projects and has put a lot of detail on those projects. The problem now is figuring out how to get them financed. So perhaps that's Mr. Sensi's role, in helping the Flood and Erosion Control Board promote, prioritize, and most importantly, creatively finance the much-needed engineering projects that have been developed by the Flood and Erosion Control Board. Our vote on Mr. Sensi was 10-0-0. Districts 3 and 7 absent.
Thank you. Arlene Lamazo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Mr. Moderator and members and guests, Robert Sensi appeared before us. As you know, he's being nominated as an alternate member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board. I won't go through his history at Goldman Sachs, except to say, prior to, he worked there for many decades, but prior to his retirement, he was a partner for nine years. As an investment banker, one of his primary specialties was in municipal finance. His credentials make him ideally suited to assist this board in planning for a major town initiative, namely, the need to address flooding from both riverine and coastal sources. We've already heard about the potential cost and extensive duration of time involved in addressing flooding problems. In our interview, Mr. Sensi explained that the town was not aggressively or actively tackling this issue, and that there needed to be a reexamination of current policy. We felt that the experience we he bring to this board would establish long-term planning, prioritizing of projects, and financing such projects, and we think his expertise would be invaluable. Our vote was 11-0-1. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item eight. Item nine now comes be, I'm sorry. Item 11 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? Peter Tessie, our first selectman. Oh, whoa, 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 okay. Yeah, my apologies. This is not a combined item. All right, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number eight. Did we vote on seven?
Yeah.
All right. So please mark your voting cards, item number eight, and proceed to poll your delegation. Thank you. Item 11 now comes before us. Peter Tessie.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherall Board of Directors for a term expiring 3/31/18, Lloyd Banksen.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 11 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris with the report of the Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Mr. Banksen was interviewed last week by our committee. Mr. Banksen has served on the Witherall Board for 10 years. One of his biggest achievements as a board member was securing Connecticut State historic tax credits in the amount of $4.5 million to help offset the cost of Project Renew. It took him approximately six years to see this deal through from start to finish. During our interview with Mr. Banksen, he was very candid about some of the financial challenges facing Witherall. While the newly renovated short-term rehab facility is financially very successful, the long-term nursing care continues to operate at a loss. The main reason for this is the lack of private-pay residents enrolled in the facility versus the number of Medicaid clients. Witherall loses money for each Medicaid client based on the current state reimbursement rates. One way to offset those losses is to encourage more private-pay residents to consider Witherall as a viable long-term care facility, but as Mr. Banksen points out, there are numerous long-term care facilities in the area that are competing for the same private-pay patients. One of our delegates, Donna Zeal from District 9, who also happens to be a nurse, suggested trying to identify a niche market that no other long-term care facility is offering in the immediate area. She suggested exploring the possibility of becoming a facility that handles traumatic brain injury, specifically as it relates to veterans and linking up with the Wounded Warrior Project, to see what the need is in the immediate New York area for such a service. The idea was to try and capture a piece of the market that may have been overlooked and that has a substantial reimbursement rate. Mr. Banksen stated that the board is open to looking at all reasonable options that look at financial stability, or that lead to financial stability. The financial health of Witherall is something that has been discussed over many years in this body. Currently, the Witherall is operating a loss and relies on town contributions to offset those losses. The Health and Human Services Delegate from District 11 believes that, and this is a quote, "Due to a variety of factors, including changes in health care, there is a recent history of significant losses at the Witherall and the likelihood that those losses will continue." The delegate believes that the board needs to make some hard choices," another quote, "which may include the possibility of significant cutbacks or exit entirely from an unprofitable service such as long-term care." The delegate felt that Mr. Banksen was unwilling to make significant changes in operations, for example, shutting down the long-term care portion of Witherall, and therefore, he could not support his renomination. At this point in the meeting, the committee members reminded the delegate from District 11 that we were discussing Mr. Banksen's candidacy for renomination to the board and not endeavoring to determine if the town should be in the nursing home business and/or reviewing major operational overhauls of Witherall. Our vote was 11-1-0, with District 11 voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace Garthwaite with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Mr. Banksen met with the Appointments Committee this evening. As you heard, he has served on the Nathaniel Witherall Board since 2006, and he actually actively recruited Dr. Francis Ennis as a new member of the board. So he always has his eye out as ways to improve what's going on with the Nathaniel Witherall Board and also with the institution as itself. He did say that he has never seen challenges as great as they are right now, particularly with the competition from assisted-living facilities, which, you know, are not skilled nursing facilities like the Witherall is. He is now serving on a newly-formed Strategy Committee, and they are looking at many, many options to bring in additional cash flow and to make this facility profitable and yet still serve the needs of those in Greenwich who need the services of long-term care. Our vote was 11-0-0, with District 2 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item 11. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item 11, and proceed to poll your delegation. At this point, Mr. Wells, could I ask you to come up on the stage, please? As you may know, Joan Caldwell is not here tonight, and I'd asked Mr. Wells if I needed someone to fill in for me, if he would do that. I think we need to take a vote. So is there a motion that Mr. Wells temporarily become the moderator pro temp for this meeting? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Wells, if you could, I know you have a, I'll be right back, but if...
Different perspective up here. I have the votes for two items. The results are in. Item six, those in favor, 127. Those opposed, 26, with six abstaining. Item seven, votes in favor, 151. None opposed, with four abstentions. And item eight, 144 in favor, six opposed, with one abstention. I think that brings up item 12 as the last item for the evening. This is a resolution concerning the lease renewal with Greenwich Adult Daycare Center. Is there somebody proposing that? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Item 12, resolve that the RTM approves the lease renewal with the Greenwich Adult Daycare, Inc., for property located at 125 River Road Extension, Cos Cob. The lease renewal will be for the period of 10 years, with the term ending February 9, Ben Branian, Town Administrator.
Okay, this item is now before us. Is there a motion to have the?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for this item. There is a motion and a second for this item. Now we'll hear the committee reports. Ms. Vulgaris of Health and Human Services.
Good evening. Our committee met with Ben Branian, the Town Administrator, and Linda Longmire, the Executive Director of the Greenwich Adult Daycare Center, to review the proposed 10-year lease renewal. The lease before us this evening conforms to the revised process the town adopted in 2013 for the leasing of town-owned land. In 2005, the town entered into a lease agreement with the Greenwich Adult Daycare Center to transform the old pump station on the North Mayanus River into the Adult Daycare Center. The initial 10-year lease is now up for renewal. The new lease has been updated to reflect updated insurance requirements, as recommended by the town's Director of Risk Management, and references in the original lease pertaining to the renovation of the pump station to make it suitable for occupation have been removed since all of that work was completed under the original lease agreement. Our committee feels that the Adult Daycare Center continues to be an excellent resource for seniors in the community, and that the services provided by the program fills an unmet need in the community. The program has grown exponentially from their days when they operated out of a small corner in Nathaniel Witherall. Now the program operates six days per week and can accommodate up to 75 clients per day. The program provides comprehensive clinical and therapeutic care and allows family members to drop off their loved ones in a self-well-maintained and compassionate setting that promotes social interaction. Our committee voted 12-0-0 to support this lease renewal. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's our next committee report? Peter Berg with the report of the Land Use Committee.
Evening again. We had, Land Use Committee had Amina Ahmad from the Town Law Department. We also had Ben Branian, our new town administrator, present to answer questions regarding this lease renewal. We also had Peg Drankon from the Greenwich Adult Daycare. The lease renewal is being requested pursuant to three 10-year lease extension options provided in the original lease, this being the first option. The dollar-a-year rent and the three options were granted in exchange for Greenwich Adult Daycare investing roughly $6 million to construct the facility and provide daycare services. The lease renewals are contingent upon updates in insurance requirements, which have been reviewed by town risk management, and on Greenwich Adult Daycare, providing continued evidence of providing the daycare services, documentation for which has also been submitted. A question was asked regarding whether the casualty insurance would cover the current cost to rebuild or was just based on the original cost. Ms. Ahmad confirmed it was based on the current cost. Another question concerned the new need for sexual offense insurance, and Amina explained that this was now industry standard for the elderly daycare industry. A question was raised as to whether admittance is restricted or prioritized to Greenwich residents. Ms. Drankon explained that no one has turned away, and attendance was historically about 75% Greenwich residents. Our vote on Item 12 was 10-0-0. Districts 3 and 7 absent.
Thank you. And Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we took this item last Monday evening, and we also had Amina Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney, helping with us with this, along with Mr. Branian, Town Administrator, and Britt Particelli from River House. The previous two speakers have pretty much covered the territory on this. The only additional thing I would add is our committee made two minor changes to the lease itself. On Page 2 of the lease, there is a provision that incorrectly reads, "The town and GADC hereby enters into this lease to provide for a 10-year lease term with options to renew for two additional periods of 10 years." We put an S on "period," so it reads properly, "two additional periods of 10 years." And then on Page 5, in Section 5, there is a provision there that would have provided GADC with no responsibility for any environmental condition arising out of, or any violation arising out of such condition, which condition existed prior to the commencement date, but that would have been the commencement date of this lease. Our committee didn't think it appropriate that GADC should be given a pass for any environmental condition that may have arisen during their watch on this property, so we changed that by deleting the language "the commencement date," so that now reads "which condition existed prior to February 9, 2005," which is the beginning of their first 10-year lease term.
All right. So you're making those proposed changes now?
I am.
All right. So we have a motion to amend the lease, which we can do, in the two respects that Mr. Wells just described. Is there any need to repeat those two proposed changes?
No.
All right. Is there any objection to those proposed changes?
No.
All right. So that motion to amend offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee is adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you very much.
And as revised, our vote was 11-0-0 with District 9 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 12.
Question.
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 12, and proceed to poll your delegation? That being the final item on our agenda, we will await the resolution of the pending votes before proceeding to adjourn. Please remember, everyone is encouraged to come out on Sunday to celebrate the town's 375th anniversary. It promises to be a wonderful affair. We're going to need some people to carry this banner, so Tony Savino will call your name if you are carrying that banner as you pass his post. So let's all look forward to seeing each other on Sunday. So we will await the resolution of the pending votes. All right, we have the result of the vote on the lease to the Greenwich Adult Daycare. This is Item 12. Those in favor, 140; opposed, 0; abstaining, 1. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.